Don't be rude, Mr. and Mrs. President.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mer Cole, please.
May I?
Here.
Rosak?
Here.
Crouch?
Here.
Scarborough?
Here.
Merrill Landsford?
Here.
Approve of the agenda, there any changes?
Mayor, there are no changes to be ordered of the agenda.
Then we'll move to public comment, anyone like to address the council, please step to the podium and state your name. Okay, you're done, and we'll move to new business, we'll go to item one. Want to go over that term?
Yeah, I can cover this one, except this is a public hearing, I have to do it at the opening, sorry.
Okay, entertain a motion, and a second to open a public hearing.
So, a second, second.
Mer Cole, please.
Bedeine?
Aye.
Rosak?
Aye.
Crouch?
Aye.
Scarborough?
Aye.
Merrill Landsford?
Aye.
Then we request any comments from the public.
You want to give some background about what we're doing?
Yeah, so, thank you very much, all right, so, this public hearing is required as part of the IEPA Low Interest Loan Program. The city put in a loan application for the Center Street Sewer Project last fall, that project has been reviewed by IEPA, and a preliminary environmental impact statement has been issued for the project, it's been on file here at City Hall, and will continue to be until July 4th, oh, sorry, July 6th, July 6th, for any comments on the project. The project will install a new sanitary sewer along 12th Street, or along Center Street, from 12th Street to 9th Street, to eliminate the former combined sewer, Main Dom Center Street. Storm sewers will be installed along 12th, 11th, 10th, and 9th, to decombine that basin. The project will lead to the elimination of one of the CSOs combined sewer overflows at Northwest Avenue, so, that's a good thing, that'll also lead to the elimination of three mine hole CSOs, so, we have one in Northwest Avenue that actually directly discharges to the creek, and in that basin we actually have three that go into the mines, so overflow. So this'll eliminate those as part of this project. The cost of, the estimated cost of the project is $1,670,000, includes all the work down there in Center Street, the rough project area, as I said, is basically from the west end of 10th and 9th Street over to Eliminating Street, so there'll be a new storm sewer installed in that area, as well as then the new sanitary main along Center Street. No, the city is not anticipating any changes in fees as a result of the project, so the current interest rate for the low interest loan from the IEPA is 1.76%, so that's what we're looking at. The annual payments for a 20-year period, it will be $99,117 for a 20-year period once the project is complete. That's been part of you guys' long-term sewer planning for the past four or five years, so it's no change to anything, that's, you guys have been anticipating that, so, I don't see any issues with it, I'm happy to answer any questions, but, be a good project, and this is again part of your sewer planning for the last few years, so.
I could, I want to add one thing that leads to a question, as Jeremy mentioned, the last three years or so, we've made some major revisions in the way we do sewer planning, and we incrementalize the, our approach to the Coal Run Creek decombining operation, and that it got through some of the plan improvements and the workout of drafty addition, of restructured things, so that neighborhood projects, whether they're in the city like this one, or ones that may be subsequently annexed to the city, can be financed through your revolving loan fund, and so, if you were to add, say, this is the question, if we were to add another neighborhood to the city council project list, then we can amend our project list with the low interest loan program, basically as easy as we're doing it with this one, right?
Correct, exactly, we want to add a new project, it's just, it's a process to go up with this planning document, submit it to IEPA with the loan, with the loan application, and we can add it.
It's a way to give back some of the money that we had to send to the state for the revolving loan fund?
Well, I suppose, but, yes, but that's, that's a one-off with regard to the Barlow Project, in fact, the more important thing is that if we had to issue bonds for sewer work in the general market, even though they're taxing, having municipal bonds, we'd be paying probably more than twice this interest rate, so, I know council's had some discussion about bonds for an area we might have to go out to, you know, what that interest rate should be, so here's, if we choose to do that, then this process that we're applying to eleven of the 10th and 9th Street could apply to those others as well, in the same fashion that Jeremy set out for this.
Any questions from council members on this issue? Any questions from the audience on this issue?
And again, public comment will be open until the 6th, any comments received will be sent to the IEPA, and then we'll finalize the loan document, bring it back to you.
I entertain a motion and to close the public hearing. So, move, there's a second. Mer Cole, please.
Bedeine?
Aye.
Rosak?
Aye.
Crouch?
Aye.
Scarborough?
Aye.
Merrill Landsford?
Aye.
Item two.
Mayor, council, at your last meeting in May, you approved an intergovernmental agreement with Streeter Elementary School District Number 44, and Community Unit District Number Five, Woodland, for them to share a school resource officer, you deferred action on this one, which is an amendment with the high school to enlarge the number of hours per their request, that they wanted SRO on campus. The reason for its postponement was because we wanted to give the high school district time to vote on it, they actually have a different timescape over their meetings this summer, and so they're not meeting until the 26th of July, this is on their agenda, and I don't anticipate any issues with it, but it has been your practice to vote on it after our school district partners vote on it, so, you can vote on it, or you can defer it, it's your, it's your choice, but the high school district has not voted on it, and won't until next Tuesday.
We can give them the time to make the changes that they wanted, and I, my, be my recommendation that we vote on it tonight, and it's up to them to vote, or they're not voting. Is everybody okay with that? I entertain a motion to approve the agreement between the city of Streeter and Streeter High School District 40, in connection with provision of a school resource office. So, move. Second. Any other discussion? Mer Cole, please.
Bedeine?
Aye.
Rosak?
Aye.
Crouch?
Aye.
Scarborough?
Aye.
Merrill Landsford?
Aye.
So although this, the city's still paying a third of it, and the school district is paying two-thirds, it effectively doubles the time during the school year that our SRO officer, in this case Sergeant Presnation, will be at the school.
From what the articles are in the paper, it appears that just about every school district in the area is looking to start such a program, if they don't already have it. Item three.
We have a major sewer line underneath the Streeter High School football field out at the west end of Morel Street, that sewer line has been troublesome from time to time for many years, including when I was here in my last sewer duty with you, and parts of it collapsed. It's added again, and since we didn't want to disrupt the field for the upcoming 4th of July events, we have undertaken an emergency sewer repair project, which requires your sign off, and Jeremy's going to give you more of the details.
Thank you, this guy said, if you've been down to the west end of Morel Street, you'll notice there was a large, oh, hole right outside the football field fence, down there, the old place sewer collapsed in that location, we excavated down to determine what had happened, and found that the pipe was badly deteriorated in that section, we put our sewer camera inside the line and ran it underneath the football field, and found the repair that was made in the late 80s, when Scott was here the first time, there is a repair section of about 180 feet, that's in good shape, but the section from there back to the north along Morel Street, and then from there south to its termination down in the, in the bottoms down by the sewer plant, is in bad shape as well, a lot of cracking, pieces of pipe actually missing, so, we contacted Herd Construction, who worked for us before, was in the, actually just up in Ottawa when I called them, that's why they got down here, and we can do a lining and not have to dig up the field, so, that is the recommendation to proceed, get that work done before we have a major problem underneath the football field.
So the project will replace, reline them?
It'll, it'll put an epoxy resin liner through the sewers.
Completely under the football field?
Well, it cuts across the, the one, the northern end zone, and a little ways out into the field.
And they should be, will they finish before the fireworks on the 3rd of July?
We're going to try, it's going to, it's a special order liner, the pipe is actually an odd size, so, after approval tomorrow, we're going to, we're going to order it and hope for the best. If nothing else, we go get the hole filled in before the 4th of July fireworks.
I entertain a motion to approve and authorize a contract, is it Herd?
Herd.
Herd Construction Inc., Woodfield, Illinois, for sanitary sewer repairs under the Streeter High School football field in West Morel Street. So move. There's a second.
Second.
Any other discussions? Mer Cole, please.
Bedeine?
Aye.
Rosak?
Aye.
Crouch?
Aye.
Scarborough?
Aye.
Merrill Landsford?
Aye.
Item four.
Item four is an item that you have taken action on several times already, this is another resolution that is required by the state to use the remainder of our revolving loan funds for the Barlow addition sewer project.
I entertain a motion to support and authorize DCEO grant agreement with the state of Illinois to utilize the revolving loan funds for the Barlow addition sewer project. So move. Is there a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? This actually increases the amount, right, if this is approved first time?
This actually, this will supplement, that project was awarded, it's a little confusing, it was awarded a community development block grant of $450,000 before the revolving loan closeout, and now that we close out our revolving loan fund, we're going to be allocating another $537,000 of RLF monies to afford the project.
Which you already decided to do, and this is a resolution that puts more of it in formal form.
Aye.
Rosak?
Aye.
Crouch?
Aye.
Scarborough?
Aye.
Merrill Landsford?
Aye.
Item five.
Item five, mayor, is a small tract annexation on West Bluff Street that came about because of the improvement we were just, we're just finishing up now on Bluff Street, tractor property that the owner, he's got two parcels, one of them are in, and one, the other one is not yet known, so, it's being brought into the city on a straight petition.
I entertain a motion to approve and authorize the annexation of property in Georgetown Township with Sal Lewiston County Streeter, Illinois, at 609 West Bluff Street. So move. Is there a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? Mer Cole, please.
Bedeine?
Aye.
Rosak?
Aye.
Crouch?
Aye.
Scarborough?
Aye.
Merrill Landsford?
Aye.
Item six.
Item six is a small tract about, about an acre in size, adjacent to the large tract of land in Eagle Township that CMJ and Mr. and Mrs. Mendoza brought in, this brought in, but this piece was, was not a part of the legal description, and so, this just rounds it out, it's a small tract south of the house that's up there by the railroad tracks, all of it on the east side of Spring Lake Road, road that goes up underneath the railroad track.
I entertain a motion to approve and authorize the annexation of property in Eagle Township with Sal Lewiston County, Illinois parcel at 1440 East 16th Road. So move. Is there a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? Mer Cole, please.
Bedeine?
Aye.
Rosak?
Aye.
Crouch?
Aye.
Scarborough?
Aye.
Merrill Landsford?
Aye.
Item seven.
Mayor, council, Jeremy's going to give you the details about these two facade grant requests under items eight and nine, but seven is just for you to receive and file the report of the planning commission on both of these, it doesn't obligate you to approve them, it just acknowledges that you're accepting the report for consideration.
I entertain a motion to place on file the planning commission's recommendation 2018-05, and recommendation 2018-08, to award facade grant to Nancy and Stig Arnn Holmberg, owners of 314 East Main Street, and David Teekatch, owner of 113 West Main Street. So move. There's a second.
Second.
Any discussion? Just place on file. Mer Cole, please.
Bedeine?
Aye.
Rosak?
Aye.
Crouch?
Aye.
Scarborough?
Aye.
Merrill Landsford?
Aye.
Item eight.
Item eight, thank you, item eight is a carryover from, actually going back two months, last month, council, you guys did approve the facade grant to Mr. and Mrs. Holmberg for 314, 314, yeah, 314 East Main, they subsequently came in right ahead of your meeting, and had said that they were willing to remove the awning, which was a source of concern for the planning commission, you guys referred to back to the planning commission just to make sure that they were okay with that, planning commission met last week and said, yes, they approved the new look without the awning, so that awning will be coming down, and then all of the remaining work that was already previously approved will proceed, so, recommendation that it be approved, and that work can begin.
Thank you. I entertain a motion to award a facade grant to Nancy and Stig Arnn Holmberg, owners of 314 East Main Street, in the amount of $10,000, which is approved up to April 18, 2018, at council meetings. So move. Is there a second?
Mr. Mayor, just a point of order, are we going to, on the agenda, we have, oh, nope, point of order, attorney is out of order.
Is something okay?
Yeah, you're right.
All right. You can give the second? Second. Any other discussion? Mer Cole, please.
Bedeine?
Aye.
Rosak?
Aye.
Crouch?
Aye.
Scarborough?
Aye.
Merrill Landsford?
Aye.
Item nine.
Item nine is for 113 West Main, right down the block here for Teek's Restaurant, he's put in a, Mr. Teekatch has put in a grant request to redo the, the west facade along Oak Street, will include new windows, awnings, there's an existing air conditioner that sticks out the side of the building, that'll be relocated, and then signage, planning commission reviewed it last week, and unanimously recommended it.
I entertain a motion to order facade grant to David Teekatch, owner of 113 West Main Street, in the amount of $15,000. So move. Is there a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? Mer Cole, please.
Bedeine?
Aye.
Rosak?
Aye.
Crouch?
Aye.
Scarborough?
Aye.
Merrill Landsford?
Aye.
Item ten.
For many years, Mayor, council, you have approved prevailing wage ordinance in June of every year, that for public works projects that that, that statute applies to, that is still the case, the only thing that's different now is that apparently the law's been changed, it doesn't require that you publish these prevailing wages, they are of course available for public inspection, and you still have to adopt the ordinance, but we don't have to subsequently publish it. Can you post it on our website?
I was just going to say, I'm going to turn on the web. I do request a motion to adopt and approve the prevailing wage rates to be paid to laborers, mechanics, and other workers performing construction of public works in the city of Streeter, in Sal Lewiston County, Illinois. So move. There's a second.
Second.
Any other discussion? Mer Cole, please.
Bedeine?
Aye.
Rosak?
Aye.
Crouch?
Aye.
Scarborough?
Aye.
Merrill Landsford?
Aye.
Item eleven.
Item eleven is the model ordinance that IML has provided to cities that want to enact the small cell wireless under the terms of the bill signed by Governor Ronner, it has to be enacted within two months after it goes into effect, so we have to do it either in June or in July. Cheryl has requested some additional time to take this model, to put it into the standard format for ordinances that we use, but I left it on the agenda because I wanted to ask council a couple of questions, I wanted to draw attention to some of the provisions of the model, so that if there's any discussion that's relevant to that, then Cheryl can incorporate it in the ordinance, so if you have a copy of the small cell wireless model ordinance, and I'd like to draw your attention first to page four. The ordinance, as I understand it, applies not just to poles that are owned by the city, but to any poles, even those of a private utility, that are on private, that are on city right of way, however, the city is preempted, really, as long as, as long as the power company or the telephone company whoever owns the poles, doesn't allow the wireless antenna or other apparatus to go more than 10 feet above the top of the pole, or more than 45 feet above the ground, if it's a brand-new pole installation, then your right to regulate is preempted, that's, that's one of the things that the IML objected to about this. Actually, the terms are not that onerous, and it's just that there were some jurisdictions in the state, ours was not one of them, that objected to that, to taking that out of city control, and that's all mentioned in this permitted use at the top of page four. So, a private power company or utility company can make a blanket approval for anything that goes on their poles, to us, as long as it's in the right of way, and unless there's some objection we make about it not being in compliance with the law, we have no grounds to say no, that's, that's the preemption. And that's further expanded on page five, paragraph D, more than halfway down the page, where the city shall deny an application only if it doesn't meet the requirements of the ordinance and effectively the statute, so, let's see, on page eight, you see the provision about maximum height of these wireless facilities can't be any more than 10 feet above the utility pole, or 45, if it's a brand-new pole, basically, the position of the telecommunications industry to push this bill through the legislature is that as long as it doesn't, as long as it meets these requirements, and isn't more troublesome than that, then it's not an invasion of the tranquility of a residential neighborhood, and so, the city has no right to have other requirements, and so on page nine, it basically says, if it is more than 10 feet above the existing pole, or more than 45 feet, and some other provision that is not met in here, then you have the right to say, no, you've got to go to your planning commission and get a special use permit, or some kind of a special appeal approved by the city council on a case-by-case basis, but as long as it's underneath those requirements, and most of this stuff is going to be, if not all, in Streeter's case, but, so that's the out for something that's extraordinary, you do have a little bit more authority when it's your poles, and about 15% of the light poles in the city of Streeter are owned by the city of Streeter, and we expect to have more as time goes on, as we switch over some of the lights, LED lights that are owned by the city, and, but even in those, we have a little bit more authority, and this is mentioned in here as well, for example, if we want to reserve space on the pole for some of our own equipment, telecommunications equipment, or for our own wiring, to connect different facilities, but even that is extremely limited, so the wireless companies really got what they wanted, for the most part, but what they wanted isn't that disruptive to Streeter either, okay, and we are allowed to charge fines, but they are capped in here, as what they are, and at maximum, depending on how many applications we receive, it's probably, in Streeter's case, only going to be a couple thousand dollars a year. Okay. You said we had to enact, or do something with this? No, we are not required to enact this ordinance, but if we want to enact it, we have to do it within 60 days from the time the governor signs it, so, you, you can elect as a council not to do anything, I, I. What's your recommendation? My recommendation is, is that we pass a Streeter version of the model, because even though the state has, has preempted our authority on many different levels, it's still valuable to the city to have a common regulation to derive what fees we can from it, and, and I think that it certainly fits in with our larger poles of changing out some of the poles that we want to do anyway, so, I mean, a regulation that takes away some of our authority still provides uniform regulation, that's still in the city's best interests. Anything else that?
Oh, could be more.
So, then, will you have enough time left to make the decisions that, the recommendations you need to do, so we can?
Like that and draw.
July, agenda?
Yes, so.
So then, is there a motion to table it?
If, if council wishes to adopt it, then it would be appropriate to table it, if you don't wish to adopt it, then I would, then I would say, express that now and save us some time. I think it's my, like.
Or label it.
Motion by Scarborough?
With the intention of enacting next month, yeah.
There's a second. Any other discussion? Mer Cole, please.
Bedeine?
Aye.
Rosak?
Aye.
Crouch?
Aye.
Scarborough?
Aye.
Merrill Landsford?
Aye.
Item twelve.
Item twelve is a vacation of, what is Streeter, early versions said alley, but it's a street actually, it's Hall Street, east of Otter Creek, which you have a hard time finding, really, it looks like a driveway today, but there is a dedicated right of way, the petitioner made this request some time ago, since most of the right of way actually lies outside the city, in unincorporated Otter Creek Township, we directed that we get that portion vacated first, we didn't want to have a portion that's vacated, and then, which denies access to a portion that hasn't been vacated, so, he has done that, there's minutes of the Otter Creek Township Board, so it's appropriate now for the city to do that, and in putting this together, Jeremy complied with your city council policy on how we go about making notification to the adjoining property owners, so this, so this actually is the last step in vacating all of Hall Street on the east side of Otter Creek.
Is there any response from any of these individuals?
Signs it up, let's see, let's see if we comply.
I entertain a motion to adopt and approve the vacated and the substantial of Hall Street, Otter Creek Township, city of Streeter. So move. There's a second.
Second.
Any other discussion? Mer Cole, please.
Bedeine?
Aye.
Rosak?
Aye.
Crouch?
Aye.
Scarborough?
Aye.
Merrill Landsford?
Consent agenda, request a motion to approve the consent agenda with Councilman Scarborough abstaining from section B, and Councilman Crouch abstaining from section D. So move. Second. Second. Any other discussion? Mer Cole, please.
Bedeine?
Aye.
Rosak?
Aye.
Crouch?
Aye.
Scarborough?
Aye.
Merrill Landsford?
Aye.
Do we have any comments, council members, or, Jeremy, you'll bring in some data, everything you can do?
Sure, no, I just was going to mention, I encourage people to attend the 150th celebration, kicking off a week from today, with the wall dogs, starting Wednesday night, there'll be a ban on the pump pavilion from 7:00 to 9:00 p.m., and then after dark, the artists will be protecting on the walls, we have 260 artists visiting us, representing 31 U.S. states and 11 different countries, we have over 150 people who have signed up from Streeter and our surrounding areas to be volunteers during that time, and people who have opened their homes to artists, we also, the next day, June 28th, the 4th of July celebration kicks off, National Acts Parade, Carnival, all sorts of things there, kids, there are kids corners that Friday, and then the following weekend, Pluto Fest, so I just wanted to really thank the people who volunteered to put this on, including all those organizations and the Sesquicentennial Committee, because people often see the end result, but not the nights you spend in meetings, preparation, late nights, fundraising planning, and all the hard work and dedication it takes to make things happen, so, any of the volunteers out there, just thank you for everything that you've done for this. Okay?
Geez, myself, looked in my little.
Did you?
Yeah, they did, gave me over, actually, I just wanted to congratulate the hundreds of volunteers that are involved in 150th anniversary of Streeter this year, Fort July Committee, 150th Committee, Start Committee, the Park Committee, and the Wall Dog Committee. Tara's pretty modest, but she started this over three years ago, and it's taken that long, many, many, many meetings, to get all the volunteers, all the artists lined up
long, many, many, many meetings, to get all the volunteers, all the artists lined up for this, and it's turned out to be, I believe, the largest event that they've ever done with around two hundred and sixty artists, international artists coming to Streeter to help us celebrate. And I hope that all these groups and volunteers never get discouraged by, you know, there's a small group of negative people on any issue, and they're, they're always vocal, but just keep going, doing a great job. Congratulations to all the volunteers.
All right. Joe?
Just a couple things. I've gotten so many wonderful comments about our downtown area, and it does look very nice, but the most comments I've gotten is about the splash pad, and I drive by there a couple times today, and it is packed. Thank you, Mr. Deacon and his family, because I've even had some friends from the, from out of town that took their concern. What to say, I mean, it really is-
I just echo basically what Miss said, that anybody that is, does any type of volunteer work or philanthropic work for the community that's of positive nature, it certainly is appreciated by, I don't know, the council, and, and I also have comments from a lot of different individuals saying how nice it is. And I've started now to receive emails from former Streeterites that have been here visiting